Called to Word of that, Ironton City Council meeting September 28, 2023. With us for our invocation tonight, we have Reverend Jeff Kermains with City Mission Church. If you would stand for invocation and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance, immediately, follow.
My heavenly fathers, we come to you tonight in wisdom, seeking your guidance and direction. The whole business, Father, will be conducted here tonight. I pray for your leadership and your wisdom and your guidance in each and every one. Father, just bless your tonight's invitation, Jesus.
Amen. Thank you, Reverend Kermains.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please, Martha.
Cleary.
Here.
Annie.
Here.
Harvey.
Here.
Paul.
Here.
Klein.
Here.
Harry.
Here.
Pierce.
Here.
Next on the agenda, we have the approval of minutes from the regular council meeting of September 14, 2023, and the Finance Committee meeting of September 14, 2023. Do we have any edits, additions, or omissions to those minutes? I'm seeing none, those minutes will stand as approved. Next, tonight, we have audience participation. If you'd like to address council, please step to the podium, state your name, address, and you'll have five minutes to address council.
All right, I'll be brief. Ralph Klein, Community Action Board Lieutenant, South Hill. I just kind of wanted to come to the council here. There's a grant opportunity that was referred to us from Anne Bonner. If you don't know who Anne Bonner is, she's an urban arborist who's been working with the city on tree selections and things over here, city, mainly through Orange and Bloom. Anyhow, there's a program, grant program out there, it's called Urban Inflation Reduction Act and things, which you probably all heard, that makes available grants from fifteen thousand up to two hundred and fifty thousand to do different things as far as improving your tree canopies in the, in the city, things like planting new trees, working with residents to plant trees, trees in parks, those type of things, trimming trees, which, you know, we've had some, and, you know, over a period of time, we've been trying to replace trees that are dying and inappropriate for the things. But anyhow, it's an opportunity out, out there. But one of the issues, or one of the things to qualify you to receive the grant is to have a, an established tree commission. And I talked with Anne on that, and what, you know, would be involved with the tree commission, because, I mean, you hear some that are, like in your urban areas of Dublin and things like that, that you have to go do with all your permits and things on those lines every time you do the trees. But she gave me some that sort of typical smaller communities, that basically they're kind of like an advisory commission, they advise the city, you know, okay, and it'd be people who are familiar with and have the expertise to advise the city, or if a resident wants to, to plant a tree or whatever, they would be available as a resource to, for those residents and say, you know, suggest this species to fit within this type of thing, where you're not getting tangled in your power lines, and if you don't want leaves to rake and on down the line. So with that, you know, if that is something the city would consider, then I think this would be a good grant opportunity we can go after. And we've identified several different areas in the city, you know, like continuing the tree pepper on the railroad street, that kind of thing, some of the portion of landscaping and riverfront, some of our gateway park areas, and maybe working with some of the residents who want to reestablish tree canopies on their tree lawns and those types of things. So it'd be something I think, you know, we could put together. Don't have anything immediate on it, I mean, we have to take great action tonight, but it's due November 30, and if something that you all think would be something worthy to do, we would come put together that, work with, pretty much whatever, based upon sample legislation that they have here. And then there would be an appointment of volunteers to work with it, which some of the members who've been working going that now through Orange and Bloom probably would be available if you'd want to try and recruit them to do it. Probably talking with Sam, I guess, the mayor typically under here, you, you, Sam makes recommendation appointments, and you all formally appoint him or act on that thing. So anyhow, it's out there, and I want to get your input.
Mr. Klein, you'd mentioned that it, that program involved maybe some trimming, would it possibly involve removal of trees that are overgrown or dangerous or diseased?
Yes.
A part of that?
Right, yeah, that's, yeah, that's what the idea is to do it, and we establish a healthy tree that's appropriate for areas. I mean, take a look at, just like once you're beside the city building, you can see they're, they're in their last length of maturity and, you know, and their.
And these would be trees on city property?
They had to be on public entity property, yes, right, which would be your tree lawns, which I, I'm assuming Reagan could give that opinion, but I think everything from the sidewalk count would be in the city, right of ways, and parks and riverfronts and that kind of thing.
Sure, sounds good. Chris?
Mr. Klein, thanks. Would this program take care of any of the extremely overgrown trees trunk-wise that caused heated up sidewalks, and would there be any room in that budget to replace any of those sidewalks, two or three places?
No, you can't replace, that was one of the ineligible thing, you cannot replace sidewalk streets or whatever. But you could probably take care of removing the tree if it's a dangerous or whatever tree and have to replace it, so something that's appropriate, so.
Thank you.
Craig?
I'll be happy as soon as I have it out.
Okay, well, I mean, if it's a thing that, in general consensus, something we want to do, we'll go back and put together, propose legislation proposals for a program or whatever, and we'll get to you at a later meeting.
Well, I would also sponsor that, Ralph, but it seems time sensitive, so do you already have a tree?
November, we have until November 30. So submit an application.
It'll be here before you know it. Do you already have a tree commission in mind? Does council need to?
I have talked to, I've talked to some individuals, Carol Allen being one of them, because she's one of our key people. We have some people from the Garden Club that's kind of worked with it. And we've got some people that are going to a workshop next week, I think, in Athens that's going to be attending, so I can come back with some recommendations as to what people might be willing to donate time and things to do that.
Craig? You also have the University of Biology Department, I'm not sure if some of them volunteered.
Yeah, it doesn't, I mean, the legislations I've had here doesn't give any specific amounts, so, I mean, that would be something we can kind of debate around and think, but yeah, I'd be, we would definitely like to have some of those individuals, or maybe, you know, somebody from the city rec department or something like that, too, to work for whoever maintains trees and things here in the city, so. If that's, I take it in general, that's a yes to go back and put it together for you guys, am I right? Okay, we'll do it.
We'll sponsor it, so if you just, you know, if it's that time sensitive, we'll try to get it on the next agenda.
Okay, I, November 30, so let's wait out of the line for me, I reckon, so we're good. But we'll get it, we'll probably get it at the next meeting.
Three meetings, yeah, you've only got three meetings until then, so.
Okay, we'll do it.
All right, thank you, Ralph.
Amanda Cleary, 1742 North Second Street. For the record, I'm of no relation to Councilman Cleary. This evening, I'm here on behalf of the nonprofit organization Third and Center. Third and Center has identified a gap in programming in the Ironton Senior Center. So currently, the senior center is located on the second floor of the Park Avenue Apartments, and it's been in operations for several years. Their primary source of funding is through the generosity of the Lawrence County Commissioners, and currently, those funds are just being handled by the Community Action Organization. The senior center is currently without a program coordinator and without someone designated as the responsible party for providing their meals. So Third and Center has stepped in, and since about the end of August, has established a meal train through the generosity of our community, the seniors have been fed through that program. Third and Center has been in talks with the Community Action Organization, and they have agreed to hand over the responsibility of the program to Third and Center, allowing the seniors to continue use of the space at no cost, and the utilities and insurance to be, continued to be paid through the Community Action Organization. So with that contract in the works, Third and Center approached the Lawrence County Commissioners and asked for the funds that are currently on hold with the Community Action to be transferred to Third and Center, and the county commissioners have agreed to make that transfer, making Third and Center the responsible party for the senior center, programming and meal planning. So with that, Third and Center's intention is to create two part-time positions. One would be for a program coordinator, to make sure that our seniors are actively engaged in programming, activities, and just general, you know, community at that space. Currently, there are about twenty-five people that attend the Ironton Senior Center. The, I was able to speak with the county commissioners and ask them to continue their monetary donation to the senior center and ask them for fifteen thousand dollars for the next fiscal year. They will meet and discuss that, but I'm here this evening to ask council to consider adding a line item to the city's permanent budget under the Recreation Department for the senior center. So I believe that it's our responsibility as members of our community to provide opportunities for our seniors to participate, to come together, to receive nourishing meals three times a week, and again, that will create two part-time positions, well-paid, for residents of the city of Ironton. In addition to the senior center, there's also a full-size industrial kitchen that is licensed right now to the food truck Fat Boy Q. So we are looking at establishing a dual license and turning that space into a community kitchen. So I'm not, I'm not sure if you all are familiar with the cottage food industry, but this will be able to create micro businesses for people that do things like canned jar jellies to sell in retail spaces. So they have to have an industrial kitchen to receive certification to sell those things online. So again, another form of business opportunities for members of our community that will be created through this partnership between the senior center, Third and Center, and the Community Action Organization. So I'm here this evening to ask that the council consider funding the senior center program, and that contribution, along with the county commissioner's contribution, will make a Third and Center eligible for grant funding to continue to provide nourishing meals and engaging recreation activities for these seniors in Ironton. So I'm happy to answer any questions you all have.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thanks so much.
She said, the commissioner, uh, fifteen thousand dollars.
Yes. She asked for an additional fifteen thousand dollars. How are you?
I'm good, how are you? I'm gonna say, do you need a, okay. My name is Tammy Rousey, I live at 2619 South Fourth Street. I've only been in Ironton for almost two years, but I live on Fourth Street, but over on Third Street on September 8, something very serious happened, and I'm not sure, I'm not, I don't know any of you, so I don't know if you are part of the police department or any kind of safety air in this county. Excuse me. But that night, Don Wood was murdered, David Maynard was eventually taken down. But when that happened, I was at the Colbro football game and received a call from my granddaughter, that she was sitting there with police surrounded by the, in all over the area with guns drawn. So needless to say, I was frantic and trying to get to my house as fast as I could, drove right into my house, and my daughter came quickly behind me and picked up the rest of my grandchildren and pulled away. At any given moment at that time, David Maynard could have taken my daughter, my neighbors could have been attacked, one who was elderly, who was wonderful, but she lives by herself, and no one was there. The police, I feel like we should have been on a lockdown. Our neighborhood was at, at the mercy of this man. He was in the alley that night. He was up and down that street, and no one was there to protect us because the guns were drawn and they were looking at this house. But we should have had some kind of system where we were told, stay in your house, go on lockdown, do some, you know, lock your doors, stay out of the windows, but nothing happened. Nothing happened in that entire area. We watched it all happen. I feel like, that leads me into, I think we need some type of automated system here in Ironton, that it can be beneficial, we can go through it, because most people don't have social media that are elderly, they don't. And we can't rely on that always, but if we had text, if we had phone, we had an automatic phone message, there is something happening in your neighborhood, we need you to remain in your house with your doors and windows locked, we will let you know something different. That should have happened. So many things could have happened that night. My daughter drove off, not one police officer stopped her because they were trying to protect or get David Maynard. So we need to do something, but that automated system can be so useful. It can help with letting people know about the cleanup that's coming up, letting people know, um, we've had a water main break, which is frequent, and that we're gonna have brown water for a day or two, or we're gonna flush the lines. That automated system could help so much, and that's what I'm here to ask for, is for you all to look at it and consider doing it, because some of these lives, many lives could have been lost that night.
Ma'am, ma'am, we do have an automated system. If you get on the city website, you can text a number, and you can get updates through the city website.
I've done that several times, and no one has ever called or texted me.
You haven't gotten a text from it?
No.
About any water breaks, because I, I'm actually signed up for it, and I have gotten texts.
I have signed up multiple times, and nothing happened.
Mayor's that system up and running?
Now, I don't know about the police, they, we're all going to that, that's something to look at.
Ms. Harmon, who lives across the street, my friend right beside me, Atlanta Salliers, none of these people, we've all tried this, because I said, well, maybe that's the automated system they have, but we don't have anything. And I, again, this eighty-two-year-old lady across the street, when all of this started happening, we all were out on our porch to make sure she was safe. That man could have come through and gunned us all down, and we wouldn't have known any different. So, and I, I, it's nothing against Ironton Police Department, and please don't take that as, as it is, because if that automated system isn't in place, I mean, what it, you know, Ironton can't do anything but defend and protect what is right there, what's happening. But at the time, I just feel like that somebody should have said, get in your houses, lock your doors, and it happened right in front of me.
Chris?
It just seems like that might be an Amber Alert type feature added to the, added to the system.
Yeah, I agree, you might want to talk to Mayor and Chief here.
Greg?
I, I hear everything you're saying, and completely agree with, with all of your sentiment around public safety. Right now, our, our citywide system is, has two flaws. One, it's set up as opt-in, which it has to be, you can't know who's moving in and out of act, and then get their cell phone data and send them text messages without them opting in. So it's an opt-in system, which isn't ideal, but, but for people that don't have social media, they should know that they can opt in to receive a text message or others. And right now, our limitation is that it's related to city business type things, so water, infrastructure type of things, and not really considered for emergencies. So it, just know that your comments did fall in that ear, I, I hear you.
Okay, all right, thank you. Oh, that was the same situation with the fact that David Maynard, I went to school with David Maynard, I was there when the murder happened in nineteen eighty-nine. The fact that he had been living there, one half a block from me, right in front of me, and no one told me. I should, I, I feel like if we have a victim advocate, if somebody is raped, or they're a sex offender, they're at the door. You know, there's in a mail, you know, hey, you have somebody there within that certain, you know, three-block area. I had this man who killed somebody brutally, and nobody told me that he was a half a block from me, nobody. And I feel like we all should have known in a three or four-block radius that that man was there. We should, we should be entitled to that information. Yes, he served his time.
I'm gonna ask, is that, is there anything you can do about?
So we, we, we have a violent offender registry. We have one, but it only, the only people it can access are law enforcement officers. It is a true flaw in the system. So we have a sexual registration, for example. Mr. Maynard shouldn't have ever been out of prison, he didn't serve all his time. He's sentenced to a license, and he shouldn't have been out. That's a whole other topic, but no, I think the legislature needs a violent offender registry. I'm one hundred percent for it.
Chris?
With the help of Greg, I would absolutely, based on the work that I do, I would absolutely get behind such legislation, not just for violent offenders.
It just has to be done at state level, it can't be done at local level. But we could send, the council could send a letter to Speaker of the House requesting that they look into a violent offender registry, I think that would be wise. I'd be trapped up there, you can go.
Somebody's sitting. I would be happy to sponsor it, too, but I, I do know that our solicitor advocated for no, no release, correct? No release, so finish the sentence, and, appreciate that.
Thank you. So yeah, I'll, I'll prepare a letter on my counsel then to send, and I'll circulate an email.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Long time since I've been here. Hello, for those who know me, LDO Executive Director, Bridging the Past, Historical Preservation and a whole lot more. To that lady's point, which is not my point, I was alerted immediately through my Ring Doorbell system, which has nothing to do with social media, if that's interesting. There is a neighborhood watch, and they come on your phone immediately and tell you to stay in, they tell you something's wrong, they tell you everything. We even know about water breaks and everything, and all you have to do is have a Ring Doorbell, and just on your phone, you just have that community app, and it's a neighborhood watch, and they tell you everything, if that might help or any.
I'd beg help.
That's not why I'm here, but that's a really inexpensive way.
So that just comes along with your subscription to ring?
Yeah, it just comes along with your subscription to ring, and I mean, me and my son both, you know, locked and loaded, but we were ready, and I, we really were, but that's not it. Um, but that's not why I'm here, but I mean, yeah, yeah, we were more than prepared. Tonight, I'm here about several things. Number one, all this talk in the past about making Ironton beautiful, you can't make something beautiful until you revive it, and making it beautiful comes after it's been revived, and we need to start being known for something more than the historical parade that's the oldest parade in the country, because that is old news, and it is not doing enough to attract people to Ironton. The historical society, I have a hard time with them, because it seems like when people come here, I talk to a lot of people who go to the hotels, and they don't understand because the historical society's never open, it only has such a few hours, that people can't go there. That's just another point. The Ghost Walk, I have had so many ideas and presented them, to where if we did it to where all these people who studied and did these wonderful performances, if it was one walk-through, and all the people had to be taken on the walk-around and listened to all the people, and we had water outside to sell, and bumper stickers, I could have had ten guarantee you news organizations, not just from around here, but outside of here, which would bring business. Okay, that's something for you all to think about. The other thing is, we need a playground, and we don't need a playground that's got swing sets on it. We need a playground with obstacle courses, we need a playground, which I've already looked into it, where we can have counselors available, one counselor volunteer every day to be there, not only as an advocate for the children who are there to protect them from everything that's not right in Ironton, that I won't get into, that we all know about, but if the children have a question, or hey, I have this math problem, and I came home with it, and I, I don't know what to do, somebody there to help them, and somebody there to supervise, but we need a playground, and there's plenty of grants, I'm willing to help with that, I'm willing to go with it if we can get a piece of land, because we are losing so much, because we have nothing for children. Heck, every child I know goes to the Ashland Park. Well, I, I'm not supporting Ashland, I won't even buy groceries in Ashland. I'm trying to keep my business in Ironton, but you can't do that if there's nothing here in Ironton, and there's nothing for kids. The water park is the only thing, but that's not open very long, and once it shuts down, there's nothing for children, and it's really sad. And at one time, Briggs offered me a room so we could give free lessons, musical lessons, voice lessons, and I have plenty of people who would participate in those teachings to children. But again, COVID came along, and that lost me. To the last problem, well, one of two things, we need a rabies clinic, which I can have set up for five dollars apiece, so people can have their cats and dogs vaccinated. This is extremely important, and it's a five-dollar program with a vet coming in, and you bring your animal. Also, have a veterinarian who goes to Ashland, who will come here and do a low-cost spay and neuter program. I had rescue kittens that I found on the street in Ironton, spayed, neutered, tattooed, microchipped, and all their shots for forty-five dollars apiece. That's amazing, and a lot of people would do it, a lot of people can't afford the other programs, but we could bring that in, and I think a lot of people in Ironton would appreciate that and love it. Down to my last problem, I want to talk about the municipal building, but tonight isn't the time, so I'd like to get together with some of you all who are interested in that and work with me on it. My last point, I am hysterically upset over the school system at Ironton Grade School. What are we teaching our children? There is a sign for everything, and there is a sign for a reason. Don't walk, wash your hands after you go to the restroom, everything. Signs are for protection, signs are for. Everything, signs are for protection, signs are for direction, signs are for everything. I have repetitively asked Ironton Grade School why the people are allowed to park in a zone that says, "No parking, fire zone." I've got pictures of it. My reply has been, "Well, there is no fire at the moment," and they're only here for 20 or 30 minutes to pick up their children, and it makes it convenient. So, either take down the signs that teach our children that you don't have to obey the rules. You don't have to obey these rules, and if you don't have to obey that rule, that's something as serious as a fire, you don't have to obey the rule that says, "Oh, handicapped." Well, anybody can park in a handicap spot then, because we didn't teach our children to obey those.
Ma'am, the council cannot do anything about the school system. They do have meetings the first Monday of every month.
I know that.
You can, we, there's absolutely nothing we can do with the Ironton City School system.
But there ought to be something you all can recognize on that.
Your, your time's up. If somebody wants to respond, I'll let them respond, but your time is up. Another thing is, is we just built a revitalized Total Park on 8th Street. I don't know if you've visited that, and if you, who, who do you have in mind to volunteer all, every evening to help kids with homework and oversee?
I have, I have a numerous amount of volunteers from a lot of the counseling programs that are licensed counselors.
So, they will all volunteer their time to be at the park every day?
They will volunteer their time, but we also, I also have a couple more grants, because that playground does not have an obstacle course, or a lot of the things that are still needed to make this playground something extremely special, instead of just an ordinary playground. And the last thing that does direct the police department, if, if Ironton's gonna hire, or the school's gonna hire a policeman to sit at the grade school when the kids get out, I think he should get out of his car, because I've been timed, and I've beat him to all the doors by five and a half seconds, because he's sitting in his car, and I think his presence should be out there, because we aren't, we don't know who's safe and who's not safe. So, if they're gonna have a policeman down there, can he please just stand outside the car?
Every time I drop my kids off, the police officer's standing out there with the staff in the morning.
Well, at the side door, I go every afternoon to pick up my granddaughter, and very few times have I seen him out of the car. I'm not picking, I'm glad he's there, but I think his presence should be walking around and making us feel better, anyway.
I, I've seen him, I drop my kids off, about half the mornings are there, and I've seen the officer doing his due diligence every time.
But if anybody's interested.
Another thing is, I would like to ask you, if you would please provide me the list of the volunteers that you have in mind for the city parks, and we may be able to get something together.
I can also give you the list of the rabies clinic, if we could just have a place set up where the mobile van can come and do it, and I can give you the, I can give you the information where we can contact the vet, where she's willing to come in with the staff, we just need a small area for her to work, and she'll do the low-cost spay and neuter. Pardon me?
You're gonna get that together and oversee it?
Yeah.
We just need to provide a space?
Yeah.
Would you, yeah, if you don't care, do you have my email?
I do.
It's chaney@ironsen-ohio.com. If you would send me that, I would be happy to help you.
Okay, and I also have all the information on the grants to help the playground be better, along with the municipal building, and I have a couple more grants that can be approved to help a couple of other revitalization, revitalization programs in the city, because Ironton really isn't going anywhere. I mean, I'm sorry, but I want to keep everything here in Ironton.
Ma'am, I'd have to disagree with you. Does anybody have any further questions?
I just think we need more here.
If you don't care to email me all of that information, I'd be happy to work with you.
I will see you every time I have.
Thank you. Any other audience participation tonight? I'm seeing none. No. What was your name and what organization were you with again?
I'm not with an organization. I'm the Executive Director of Bridging the Past, Historical Preservation and More.
What's your, what's your name and address?
Ellen Do, 2819 South Penn Street, Ironton.
Thank you for that.
And I can give you my email really quick.
Okay.
It's ed186808@Ohio.
Hang on, one second. Ed? Thank you.
You're very welcome.
All right. No other, John, what you got?
I just got one quick thing.
Yes, sir.
Just wanted to inform council, if you all had not received it, that one of our income tax clerks has retired. She will, tomorrow will be her last day. She served the city well for around 25 years, give or take. I can't remember exactly, I'm wanting to say 27 years. So, if you have a chance to call and wish Patty the best, call income tax and...
I wanted to stop by today, I got cut up at work.
I, I understand. I understand. Just wanted to let you know that we will be looking for replacement for that position, and I have received some resumes currently, so, thank you.
Thank you, John, and we, we appreciate all Patty's, Patty's work over the past 25 years, you say?
Six.
26 years. Moving on to communications, we have a letter from Mayor Cramblet. Craig?
Move to accept file McQuarrie's notice of the letter from Mayor Cramblet.
Bob?
I'll second the motion.
Have a motion by Craig and a second by Bob to accept the letter from Mayor Cramblet. Roll call, please.
Leary.
Aye.
Haney.
Aye.
Harvey.
Aye.
Hawke.
Aye.
Klein.
Aye.
Perry.
Aye.
Pierce.
Aye.
That letter's been accepted. Moving on to reports, we have the mayor's budget, if I can find it, right here. What is it? Do it in its lines. Moving along, moving along to ordinances, Marta, would you please give ordinance 2358 first reading?
Vacating a portion of Jones Street between Cedar Alley and South Fourth Street and declaring an emergency first reading.
Bob?
I'll make a motion that we suspend the rules to give ordinance 2358 second, third reading by Michael.
Mike?
I'll second that.
I've got a little bit of discussion. I see that Craig is here tonight, and appreciate you guys getting at all that information, and I, it's been a process, but that's usually what happens with something like this, so I appreciate all your due diligence and, and, you know, getting everybody the information we need to get. I know it's not quick, but, you know, it's finally on the agenda, and appreciate all the information that you guys gave us, so thank you. Have a motion by Bob and a second by Mike to suspend the rules for ordinance 2358. Roll call, please.
Leary.
Aye.
Haney.
Aye.
Harvey.
Aye.
Hawke.
Aye.
Klein.
Aye.
Perry.
Aye.
Pierce.
Aye.
Uh, rules have been suspended for ordinance 2358. Would you please give a second and third reading?
Vacating a portion of Jones Street between Cedar Alley and South Fourth Street and declaring an emergency second reading. Vacating a portion of Jones Street between Cedar Alley and South Fourth Street and declaring an emergency third reading.
Bob?
Make a motion to, to adopt ordinance 2358.
Mike?
I'll second that.
Have a motion by Bob and a second by Mike to adopt ordinance 2358. Roll call, please.
Leary.
Aye.
Haney.
Aye.
Harvey.
Aye.
Hawke.
Aye.
Klein.
Aye.
Perry.
Aye.
Pierce.
Aye.
Ordinance 2358 has been adopted. Congratulations, guys. Appreciate you. Moving along to ordinance 2359, would you please give that first reading?
Converting the advancements made by ordinance number 2129 to transfer of funds and declaring an emergency first reading.
Bob?
Will make a motion to suspend the rules to give ordinance 2359 second, third reading.
Chris?
I'll second.
Have a motion by Bob and a second by Chris to suspend the rules for ordinance 2359. Oh, sorry, Jacob.
Before we do that, I'd like to make mention that it was favorably recommended by the city.
Good job. Motion by Bob, second by Chris to suspend the rules for ordinance 2359. Roll call, please.
Leary.
Aye.
Haney.
Aye.
Harvey.
Aye.
Hawke.
Aye.
Klein.
Aye.
Perry.
Aye.
Pierce.
Aye.
Ordinance 2359 has been adopted. Moving along to ordinance 2360, would you please give that first reading?
Extending ordinance 2166, 2275, and 2336, imposing a moratorium upon new group residential homes or facilities and declaring an emergency first reading.
Craig?
I hesitate to ask, ordinance has expired.
Uh, the...
No, no, that's the new expiration. It's set to expire.
Make a motion to suspend the rules to give ordinance 2360 second, third reading.
Jacob?
I'll second that.
Marta, if you don't care, I would like to be a sponsor on that also. I told Nate I would a long time ago, and I...
It's all right. You can okay that, and you'll double your breath, sorry.
That's all right. It's all good. Uh, have a, a motion by Nate and a second by Jacob to suspend the rules for ordinance 2360. Roll call, please.
Leary.
Aye.
Haney.
Aye.
Harvey.
Aye.
Hawke.
Aye.
Klein.
Aye.
Perry.
Aye.
Pierce.
Aye.
The rules have been suspended for ordinance 2360. Would you please give it second, third reading?
Extending ordinance 2166, 2275, and 2336, imposing a moratorium upon new group residential homes or facilities and declaring an emergency second reading. Extending ordinance 2166, 2275, and 2336, imposing a moratorium upon new group residential homes or facilities and declaring an emergency third reading.
Jacob?
Make a motion to adopt ordinance 2360.
Chris?
I'll second.
Have a motion by Jacob and a second by Chris to adopt ordinance 2360. Roll call, please.
Leary.
Aye.
Haney.
Aye.
Harvey.
Aye.
Hawke.
Aye.
Klein.
Aye.
Perry.
Aye.
Pierce.
Aye.
Ordinance 2360 has been adopted. Moving along to ordinance 2366, would you please give that first reading?
Amending the permanent operating budget for the city of Ironton, state of Ohio for the fiscal year ending December 31, 2023, and declaring an emergency first reading.
Bob?
Make a motion to suspend the rules for ordinance 2366, give it second, third reading.
Jacob?
I'd like to make mention that this received a favorable recommendation from the city, so I would like to second that motion.
Have a motion by Bob and a second by Jacob to suspend the rules for ordinance 2366. Roll call, please.
Leary.
Aye.
Haney.
Aye.
Harvey.
Aye.
Hawke.
Aye.
Klein.
Aye.
Perry.
Aye.
Pierce.
Aye.
Rules have been suspended for ordinance 2366. Oh, Mike?
Just for the sake of our audience, could we have John explain why we're amending the permanent budget?
Discussion.
Um...
[laughing]
That's the first I've heard. Mr. Haskins, this is basically gets everything lined up with the creation of the mayor's budget, which creates Lawrence County a, a tax budget, which also begins the five-year plan. Now, on Mr. Haskins, there are numbers that are just kind of being shuffled. There were four projects that the city had transferred funds from the general fund to the wastewater fund. These projects, Mr. Haskins, were originally presented with an outside contractor performing the jobs. Mr. Haskins has made the determination that he can do that with an increase in overtime, but it will reduce the overall project cost, and that's since saving the citizens and the city of Ironton money. So, did I cover that as quickly as I could?
We're able to do most of the work in-house, with the multiple costs like contract between two savings, which is enabling a huge degree of power for the loan transfer.
Do you have a, an idea of ballpark figure of what we might be saving by doing this?
I think it's a hundred and fifty thousand, correct? I think so. Eighteen, sixteen, seventeen, ten.
Very good. Thank you.
And then there probably will be additional savings. I'm talking about that.
Thank you. Orderance 2366 has been adopted? Or what?
Suspended.
No, I was just listening to what Craig said. He said we adopted. Marta, what do you have?
Suspended.
Suspended, okay.
Can we do second, third?
Second and third reading.
Yes.
Okay, sorry, that took me off there. John's response to getting called out has me all flustered.
Sorry, guys.
Would you please give ordinance 2366 second and third reading?
Amending the permanent operating budget for the city of Ironton, state of Ohio for the fiscal year ending December 31, 2023, and declaring an emergency second reading.
Bob?
Motion to...
Jacob?
Second that motion.
We have a motion by Bob and a second by Jacob to adopt ordinance 2366. Roll call, please.
Leary.
Aye.
Haney.
Aye.
Harvey.
Aye.
Hawke.
Aye.
Klein.
Aye.
Perry.
Aye.
Pierce.
Aye.
Uh, ordinance 2366 has been adopted, finally. Moving on to resolutions, Marta, would you please give reading to resolution 2361?
A resolution authorizing the mayor to approve a tentative award conditional upon funding to Allard Excavation LLC for the Contract 1 Batham Roadway Improvements Project and declaring an emergency.
Jacob?
I have a question.
I, I have some discussion also. Uh, Bob's got a discussion.
I would like, I would like the clerk to read the, the three that is, or the two that's for...
Three of them.
All three of them. Read all three of them, and make a motion to...
Okay.
...ask them all.
A little bit of discussion before we do those readings. It says, and after speaking with our city engineer, nearing firm, it keeps on saying Batham Lane Project, Batham Lane Project, but this is an entire North End, you know, from the floodgates down almost, so it's not the Batham Lane, just Batham Lane, it is a large portion of Cedric Meadows, Green Valley area. It's just the name that they came up with at the very beginning of...
Originally, it was just that area, stormwater separation, and then it's mainly... But legal, through EPA, that's what has been identified, that's why it's still called that.
So, we call it the North End Stormwater Project, yeah, and it just keeps on saying this, just because of what IBI had, or what are they now?
Arcadis.
Would you please?
If I may, as I understand this project, it will take care of the stormwater flooding problems that have been there since probably the 1960s. They'll get new roads, new curbsides. There'll be a pump station. It's going to just be a dramatic change in that Green Valley Cedric Meadows area, something that's been needed for 60, 70 years and I think it's a terrific thing that's, that's being done here.
Since I, since I built down there, it's been needed, so... Marta, would you please read ordinance 2362 and 2363 along with the one you just read, please?
A resolution authorizing the mayor to approve a tentative award conditional upon funding to Allard Excavation LLC for the Contract Two Batham Lane Storm Pump Station Project and declaring an emergency. A resolution authorizing the mayor to approve a tentative award conditional upon funding to Southern Ohio Trenching and Excavating Inc. for the Contract Three Orange Street List Station and Force Main Improvement Project and declaring an emergency.
Bob?
The ordinance committee did give the favorable recommendation. I'd like to make a motion that we pass resolution 2361, 62, 63.
Jacob?
I'll second that motion.
We have a motion by Bob and a second by Jacob to pass ordinance 2361, 62, and 63. Roll call, please.
Leary.
Aye.
Haney.
Aye.
Harvey.
Aye.
Hawke.
Aye.
Klein.
Aye.
Perry.
Aye.
Pierce.
Aye.
Resolutions number 2361, 62, and 63 have passed. Moving along to resolution 2364, would you please give that reading?
Adopting the alternative tax budget for the city of Irons and Ohio for the fiscal year beginning January 1, 2022 and submitting the same to the county auditor of Lawrence County and declaring an emergency.
Jacob?
I'd like to make mention that this received favorable recommendation from the Finance Committee. I'd like to make a motion that we adopt resolution 2360.
Mike?
I'll second.
We have a motion by Jacob and a second by Mike to pass...
Adopt.
Or no pass, resolution 2364. Roll call, please.
Leary.
Aye.
Haney.
Aye.
Harvey.
Aye.
Hawke.
Aye.
Klein.
Aye.
Perry.
Aye.
Pierce.
Aye.
You threw me off, Jacob. You were looking at me like, oh, I think so. Moving on to resolution 2365, would you please give that reading?
Authorizing the mayor to prepare and submit an application to participate in the Ohio Public Works Commission's state capital improvement indoor local transportation improvement programs and to execute contracts as required and declaring an emergency.
Bob?
Make a motion to pass resolution 2365.
Mike?
I'll second that.
Have a motion by Bob and a second by Mike to pass resolution 2365. Roll call, please.
Leary.
Aye.
Haney.
Aye.
Harvey.
Aye.
Hawke.
Aye.
Klein.
Aye.
Perry.
Aye.
Pierce.
Aye.
Resolution 2365 has passed. Moving along to miscellaneous. Chris, Craig, Mike?
Mayor, resident at 179 Wood Lawn Drive. Just curious to know if the street paving was going to continue. I guess the actual city limit is just a few feet beyond his property. I didn't have an answer for him, so I'm just starting by asking.
170?
Yes, sir. Said it, as of right now, the milling seems to have stopped just short of the thousand. It said in years past it's gone to just a few feet beyond his property. He claims that that is the edge of Irons City Limits, so... Thank you.
Craig?
I'd like to receive filed McQuarrie minutes, August 2023, City of Irons financials, the Irons Mayor's budget for 2024, and our City of Irons five-year financial forecast.
Jacob?
I'd like to second that.
Have a motion by Craig and a second by Jacob to accept financials for five-year forecast August 2023 and mayor's budget 2024. Roll call, please.
Leary.
Aye.
Haney.
Aye.
Harvey.
Aye.
Hawke.
Aye.
Klein.
Aye.
Perry.
Aye.
Pierce.
Aye.
Mike?
I received an email from Patrick McCloy, representing the Irons and Council for the Arts. He was unable to be here this evening, but wants to say that he'll be at a future council meeting to talk about the Irons and Council for the Arts. There is an upcoming concert. The Russian duo from Cleveland will open the Irons and Council for the Arts Concert Season on Sunday, October 3, at 3, October 8, at 3:00 PM at Ohio University Southern. Admission is $15 and season tickets may be purchased for $50. And again, he'll be at a later council meeting to talk about the arts. Thank you.
Thank you. Just update, 14th, or the 10th through the 14th is dumpster days, correct?
Yeah, I don't know if I get it from that date.
Okay. Craig?
Mike, what, what, what event was it on October 8? What did you say?
It's the Irons and Council for the Arts.
I mean, what was it?
Yeah, it's a, he just has in the re, in the email that the Russian duo from Cleveland will open the Irons and Council for the Arts Concert Season. It's a musical...
They tag team wrestling event or...
It may be.
I'm just thinking.
It's with Vanjos and ukulelas.
It's a music, it's a music, got it.
Mayor?
So, street signs, the new city street signs for the 325 intersections that aren't downtown are coming in as we speak. There's some of them still being made, plus the ones that will go on the traffic lights downtown that'll be over the arms. These are coming in from north to south. They're coming in, you know, based on how big the sign is, like lettering wise and alphabet order. So if you see them, kind of like one on a Heffler Street and then one on Lorraine Street, and you're like, why would you do that? It's because we're getting them up as quick as we possibly can because we know once they all come, it's just going to be chaos getting everything up. But they are starting to go up. They look really nice. If you check them out, it's nice new 10-foot poles on any of those corners. I just mentioned Sixth and Hefflers have got one, Seventh and Hefflers got one. I know Fourth and Lorraine, and they're just putting them together as we get them and put them up. We got the green light from EDA to bid the South Third Street Reconstruction Project finally. Kevin and Arcadis are putting together the bid documents to get that out and ready to bid. And finally, I need an executive session to discuss personnel and real estate with Solicitors Council, Finance, and Brett Thomas. Chris?
Sorry, Nate?
Mayor, you know, I know it's getting late in the paving season for the Third Street Project, but would they do water, some of the water line work?
Yeah, so...
Over the winter or...
Yeah.
Either in the spring or is it going to all be pushed back?
Paving will all be contingent on, so first you have to put the new water line in